All right, I'd like to call to order the February 12, 2024 meeting of the Camper City Town Council, and we'll start with our opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. We ask you to bless these proceedings, carry our thoughts, our actions, and work. Just be with us as we guide our community to the future that you have for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sherri, can we roll?
All right. Mike Amick?
I'm here.
Debbie is absent, sick. Gary Cole?
Present.
Jim King?
Here.
And Jim McLean is online or on phone. All right.
All right.
Minutes.
Hello?
Hey, Bob.
Hey, Bob.
Hello there.
Uh, there's no public hearing tonight?
Nope, but we got a meeting. Minutes.
Okay, yeah, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of them.
The second?
Second. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the claims and financials, do I have a motion to that?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so there's the financials. If you'll sign those, then I'll pass them down this way. So far. Thanks.
There we go.
All right. Claims and minutes.
You good there?
Yep.
All right, there'll be no public hearing tonight, I guess. So first we have our guests, and first up will be Annie Hayes.
So I have several items to go over with you guys today. I just want to, one, give an update on the 1B project. And then I have two pay applications for the 1B project for the months of December and January. Those are the contractor pay applications. And then I have the change order for Phase 1B project. And then I wanted to go over some of the EDA funding, date, and timeline for the Phase 2 project, which is the water tower and transmission main out of the industrial park. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update on the Phase 1B project. We had a progress meeting last week, and Cooley has gotten a lot of work done in the past couple months. Well, number three is complete out at the industrial park. The aerator and filter replacement is complete. High service pump number three at the industrial park is installed. There's a little bit of an issue with the pump head and some of the process piping that'll have to be reinstalled later, so that's one of the things that still needs to be done. The VFDs are installed out there. The corn equipment is installed. A lot of the SCADA work is still left to do, just tying over the plant to the new SCADA and getting that all set up. Cooley wanted to do the backwash panel cut over this week, but we talked with Ken and recommended that they wait till next week to do that just because there's a lot of items to get done before that happens. And just don't want to rush any of the working out the bugs or anything like that. Cooley has submitted a substantial completion request for February 15, but in talking with our inspector out there, we don't think that they're going to be ready for that because there's still quite a few things that need to get done, including the in-town well one pumping motor still needs to be installed. And there's some electrical work that has to happen out there and some testing. And then, like I said, the high service pump three pump head and process piping needs to be reinstalled. Does anybody have any questions on the status of that project?
Anybody? I don't.
I don't specifically. Do we have any comments from Ken or from the team?
So, did they okay? The fact that he wanted to do VFD for just wells two and three, or are we going to do it for well one also?
That is part of the change order that will be approved tonight.
Okay.
And I have on there, I did just have on there wells two and three, but I added well one because Adam called me right before the meeting and said that you guys wanted that also, so that's on there.
Yeah, just so, just so everything matches. And if, we're already waiting on parts for that old VFD on well one now. And with parts not so readily available anymore, it'd be nice to have everything match.
Yeah, for sure.
That way, if there's catastrophic failure down the road, we can, for lack of better words, rob Peter to pay Paul with in-house parts rather than waiting on something else.
Yeah.
And that's part of the change order.
Yeah. And the change order that I handed out was a little bit different than the one I sent to Sherri. That was probably the one I sent. Because I did update the VFD to include all three of the in-town VFDs.
You got some of this change order?
Yes.
Okay. So do we still need approval in the pay application?
Yeah, so I have the two pay applications, and then there's a lot of stuff on the change order. But I just want to approve and make sure everything is okay. So I guess first, the easier things are the pay applications. I have pay application number six, which is for the month of December, and it's for $252,078.90. And then, sorry, that was, oh yeah, that's pay application six. Okay, and then pay application seven is for the month of January, and that is $822,032. And so these will just need Jim's signature, so I don't know how we want to do that with him being virtual.
Ken might be able to sign.
He is the presiding officer tonight. Now, if they've been for Jim's signature, I mean, scratch through it, but I would, do you see a problem if we are presiding officer tonight signs?
I'm not sure. I know that, like, the president is the authorized signature, but if he's the presiding officer, then...
Well, and I suppose he doesn't even have to be here, being the one that's authorized, so that they vote to authorize his signature. When's he come back into town though?
When you coming back, Jim?
Uh, no, I should be back in town on March 3rd.
You need that before March 3rd, I'm guessing?
I'm sure you.
Could we, Sherri, could we do what we did before? You send it to me, and I'll, I'll sign a copy and send it like second-day mail back to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that.
That's probably the safest way.
Is that though okay? Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, just, just email me the copy, and I'll sign it, and I'll send it back by priority mail.
Okay. And if you can scan it, you can just bring the copy back later if you don't want to send it in mail. You just want to email it.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need to get an approval then?
Yeah, some, a motion to approve either separately or together, pay app number six and pay app number seven.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to approve pay app number six for $252,078.90 and pay app number seven for $822,032. Anybody?
I'll move those. Be paid as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Sherri, did you go through why Jim can only take part in discussion, cannot take part in voting?
I did not, no.
Okay, just so they know, it's part of, part of what the virtual attendance is now that if he was able to be seen by the public as well as heard by the public, then he can take an active part and be considered in attendance as long as there's still 50% attendance. But without being seen, he can only, you can only talk, Jim, and listen, but you can't vote, so...
I've been in that booth.
But you can't talk. And try to vote.
I got you.
Okay. Okay, so I'll send those to Jim.
Okay.
All right, so now, the change order.
Yes, the change order. So kind of just to get into each of the items on the change order, I think all of you should have a copy of it. There are kind of eight separate change order items. And I just want to kind of briefly go through each one, so everyone's on the same page about what's on it and making sure you approve of each item on the change order. So the first one is a little bit confusing. It is about the time extension request. So if you guys remember, like, back last year, Cooley requested a 90-day time extension for the project. The town had concerns with that because of the delay in the project getting started and originally agreed to assess half the liquidated damages between the original substantial completion date and that 90 days extension. Since then, there's been some additional scope added to the project via proposed change order, which are the rest of the items listed in this change order, items two through eight. And so Cooley is entitled to additional days for some of these change order items since they are additional scope items, just because there's time to acquire extra materials and time for labor of these additional scope items. And so several of the change order items Cooley requested require additional days. So there's the items two through eight, and I can go into detail on each, each one. We're just talking about the extra days involved right now. Three of the six, three of the six items have already been done, so they requested additional days for them, but they don't really need additional days for those items. But there are three items that haven't been done yet and have been recently requested that may be added into the scope. And these are the filter controls upgrades, which I believe there's been some discussion with the council on this change order item before. That's upgrading the backwash panel to, because most of this stuff is outdated right now. And they requested five additional days for that work. And then there is adding a light to wellhouse number three, which is a pretty easy thing, so they requested one day for that. And then the longest lead item that they requested was for adding the VFDs to the town wells, and they requested 45 days for that. And a lot of that is just the lead time for obtaining the VFDs. So where it starts to get confusing, they requested a total of 60 days with the existing things that have already been done and then the ones I just mentioned that haven't been done yet. So just for the items that haven't been done, that's a total of 45 days that they're requesting. I'm just looking at the longest lead items, and some of them can be done simultaneously. So if we took that 45 days and looked at adding that to, right after we approve this change order, so say tomorrow, that would put the new substantial completion date at March 29 of this year. And the original was January 4th. So that's 85 days from the original substantial completion date. And originally, they had requested 90 days, so it gets a little bit confusing where originally we were going to assess the liquidated damages from substantial completion at January 4th, so now until the 90 days. But now, since there's additional scope, they're more justified in asking for additional days. So moving the substantial completion date to March 29, and then after that date assessing liquidated damages. Does any of that make sense? Sorry, it's...
Right, I have a question.
Yeah, for sure.
And you refer now to March 29th. In your letter, it's talking about a legitimate request of 60 rather than 90 to move it to March 5th. Has that changed even since then?
Yeah, I probably didn't update that part. So the 60 days was with all of the items, like the additional ductile iron piping, additional hydrant flushing, which those have already been done. So we are just looking at adding 45 days for the, adding the VFDs because that's the longest lead item. I think, I don't know if you have the updated copy of the change order?
45 days from the original, because the original substantial was January.
Yeah, 45 days from the approval of this change order, so from like tomorrow.
Okay, that just, it seems to me that they're, they're kind of bootstrapping their way into what, because of our finding them, that now all of a sudden they found some things that you're justifying their extension for to almost remove all of the penalty liquidated damages that we were doing.
Right, yeah. And there is an option to kind of separate out the change order and have this as a separate item. So keep the liquidated damages for the original scope of the project, but separate out this change order work if you guys wanted to pursue that path also.
I, I have a problem going beyond March 5th. I mean, I'm just not sure how we can justify going March 29th when, you know, because of the original 90 days, they had no justification for.
Right.
Now, if they have a justification for, even though you say it's 45 instead of 60, it ends up being almost 75. If you go to the 29th, it's almost just a week short of what they were asking for to begin with.
Yeah. So we, we can take some more time to think about the, the actual time extension request and maybe pull out the part about the change order and keep liquidated damages for the original scope of the project. That is an option. And we can just take this whole time extension request for now out of this change order and just kind of look at the other items if that's what you guys want to do.
I mean, majority of the change orders, 45 days of time to order the VFDs.
Yeah.
Were those not assumed that we would need in the previous part of the...
No, this was an additional scope item added, yeah.
Because that's 45 days of it. Potentially, it's up to 45 days. It's not 45 days.
Yeah.
But if we approve it, it does provide them with that entire 45 days, Graham.
That's that padding.
Yeah, it gives them that, yeah.
Although I suppose, you, I think, I think you're saying this too. They can approve the change order but say nothing about our, the damages right now.
Yeah, we can, we can completely get rid of this item number one for now and approve the actual work and not say anything about the actual days yet.
The time extension.
Yeah.
But we still have to solve that though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At some point. When are we going to do that within this 40, within the change order?
Well, something I'm, I suppose, at least by March meeting.
Yeah. March 5th, that we would, it would be good to know something by March. Because I would think if that was the original date that we had said...
But who or what's the work to get that done between now and then?
I know.
Who does that? Is that a recommendation from...
I think it's just up to you guys deciding whether you want to approve the additional 45 days making substantial completion March 29, or if you want to separate out kind of this change order work from the original scope. And so keep substantial completion for the original scope of the project as...
In other words, keep it hanging on their head.
January.
And keep them moving a little faster.
And then...
Don't let them think that they've gotten that extension approved. Tell them, well, we'll agree to the new additional work, but we are still looking forward to the, at least the March 5th rather than the 29th. They, who knows if it has an impact on them, but is it worth a try, maybe?
I would support that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think we need some time to think about it. It's not, I don't know if I can decide or vote on something that's going to penalize someone. As we discussed during our last meeting, without having a clear understanding of what we're, we're doing.
Yeah, we may go back and look at it again.
Yeah.
Because this is kind of coming out of the blue to me, to back this up another month, basically.
But I think we need to approve the change order.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, well, they need to start the work, yeah.
Yeah. So we can just get rid of item number one, kind of like cross that, cross that item out on the change order and then make sure we figure that out for next meeting. And I can kind of like send an email summary of what the options are for what to do for the next meeting.
So would we need a, would we need a motion to approve items two through eight of the change order?
Yeah, I think we could go through the rest of those.
Yeah, yeah. Just make sure we're pretty sure of the rest of them. So if we go, just to go through the rest of them, item number two was adding some additional 12-inch pipe to the project. The town initially bought the pipe for the project, but the water main that we were connecting it to for well three was a little bit further than originally expected, so Cooley had to get some additional pipe. So that's what that $6,068 was for, an additional 100 feet of the pipe and the labor to put that in.
And we talked about that last meeting, right? Didn't we talk about, didn't Ken bring up the issue that we didn't know?
I think so, yeah.
He brought it up.
So that's what that item is for. The next item was an additional hydrant for flushing out of the industrial park. The town currently uses a hydrant located next to their backwash pond for flushing, but when they do that, all the water goes into the pond, and it inhibits them from actually using the backwash pond for backwashing because they don't want it to overflow. So they requested another hydrant get put in further west of the plant so that when they flush, the water isn't going straight into the backwash pond. So that is what that $15,191 is for, the material and labor to install that additional hydrant out of the industrial park. And then item number four is the filter control upgrades. And this is for out at the industrial park. The existing SCADA infrastructure is outdated, so the change order is replacing that with more updated infrastructure. And that is for that $22,175. The next item is flushing the raw water main between wells number two and three. The existing water main between those two needed to be coordinated and flushed, but with the existing layout, that wasn't able to happen, so some fittings had to be added so that that could, that could happen and then facilitate easier testing in the future. So that was the cost of $5,815 for that. The next item was some repairs to cell number one in the industrial park water chair plant package treatment unit. In going into the project, we knew that there was going to have to be some change order work for this because the filter had to be emptied, and they had to get inside to see what kind of repairs they were going to have to make. And luckily, there wasn't actually a whole lot, so just a cost of $4,140 to repair filter cell number one. Getting towards the end. Item number seven, they wanted to add a light to the exterior of new wellhouse number three out of the industrial park. So that was a cost of $1,680. And then the final item on here was adding VFDs to towns, the town wells two and three, and then also replacing the VFD on well one to make sure that the hardware matches what's out of the industrial park, and then the new VFDs for town wells two and three. And that is a total cost of $51,270. And so the total of that, all that together, is $105,627. That would be added to the project. Does anyone have any questions about those things? There's a lot.
Yeah, a couple things. So the filter controls?
Yes.
A new Allen Bradley complex logics platform. What's the, what's the life of that? What's the warranty on that? What's the, where's, are we buying another problem, or is this a, the most up-to-date?
It, it should be the most up-to-date.
Should be, or is?
It, it is the most up-to-date hardware. The ones you have now are just outdated, and it's hard to get parts for. So that's why we need to see to get updated parts pretty easily if, if something were to happen.
I don't disagree we should, I just want to know what...
Yeah.
So this can be supported then going forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and, and so, so 900 and some dollars to put an LED pack.
That's the cheapest thing.
Sounds like an Army project.
You said, so, I mean, an LED wall pack, right?
Yeah.
And to put four brackets on a wall. So if that, if you multiply what it takes to do that into, or divide it into some of these other things, we're seeing where costs are crazy, expensive for the poker.
Totally.
Is it a, I'm, I'm not questioning 900 dollars.
Sure.
That's, that's less than 1% of this project, but I'm pretty sure that at least two people in this room I know would be capable of doing that with not a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, that's crazy.
And they're sitting here somewhere.
There are go-tos.
So I...
Did you be allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Well, that's the question.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just, I just draw attention to that as a problem.
You can, we can, I don't think they've installed that yet. Have they?
It's, and it's bright.
It's bright?
Yes.
It's a good light.
So we paid per lumen. $100 per lumen, got it. All right, well, since it's done, I'll, but I just wanted to raise that as an issue. I think when we talk about something else, Robert, in about 35 days, we ought to consider that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Even though I have a lot of respect for Cooley and I think we need them, as I said in the last meeting, that's a question mark for me.
Got it.
Yeah, it causes the question, what's the driving factor behind that cost? You know, of justification.
One, one day of fees we might talk about, almost. All right.
All right, well, I guess I will entertain a motion for...
Change order one.
Change order one, items...
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Jim.
I'm just wondering if all of this increase stays within the original budget of the project?
Yes, so it, it'll come from the contingency within the loan, which I think is around like $400,000. And then we're also removing some of the scope of the project. There was some dollars in there for booster station work, but we're, we aren't going to do that anymore, so that'll also have some funds free up as well. Those aren't funds.
So you're still, I just want to make sure we weren't overshooting our, the previous budget and more involved than the, the budget of the entire project.
Yes, good question.
That is good, thank you, Jim.
Cushion built in.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, anything, anything else? All right.
Even though I commented, I do move that we approve the change order.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
And that is without the item number...
Without item number one.
Yeah, yeah.
The motion should be amended to say without item number one.
Numbers two through eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Of change order one.
Jim, Jim needs to sign that too, so he's supposed to...
Yes.
I mean, this is all critical. We need to have it done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, how it's been done is a question.
Anything else?
She's got a timeline, you know.
Yeah, sorry. No, not today. Okay, so moving on from Phase 1B, want to talk a little bit about Phase 2 of the project, which is the water tower and water main of the industrial park. We have been looking into some different funding mechanisms for this project, and one of them is the Economic Development Administration, or EDA. And they specifically look for projects that promote economic development. So we've been coordinating with the EDA to determine if our project is competitive, and it's looking positive for the grant program. So we've put together kind of a timeline. I think I gave all of you a copy of what...
Do you have a copy? Do you have a...
What it would look like to apply for this EDA grant. And so wanted to start out by just giving some context to the EDA grant and what they can provide. So they require a 50% match rate and typically like to be invested in a project somewhere between 35 and 50%. And they also typically award grants around $2.5 million. So our total project costs for the water tower, water main, including construction and non-construction costs, is around $9 million. And so that total cost is a little bit high for what EDA would like to fund. So we looked at some options for how to kind of break the project costs out so that they can be kind of grouped into a part of the project and fund just a part of the project. So one of those options is to have, keep the project as a whole, so the water tower and water main, but EDA would only fund the construction dollars for the project. So they would have a grant of around $2.5 million of the construction costs, which is $7 million, so they'd be invested about 35%, and that's on the low side of what they would want to be invested at. So that's something to keep in mind. And then the match, we've also been talking with the Indiana Bond Bank, and they could be the match for this project. And then the county also, we don't know where their contribution is going to land, so that's also something that is unknown. also something that is unknown, and we need to figure out what they're willing to contribute to the project. So one of the other options that's looking a little bit more favorable for the funding package is to break down the project into the water tower as separate from the water main. And so if we just look at the water tower construction cost, that's about $5.5 million. And so if EDA funds that with a $2.5 million grant, then that's about 45%, so it's closer to that 50% that they like to be invested at. And then for the other side of the tank, construction costs, we would look at look to Indiana Bond Bank and/or the county for that other 50% match. And then that still leaves the non-construction costs, which would have to be another bond with Indiana Bond Bank, and then the water main, that leaves the water main also, which would have to be another separate portion of the project. And one of the other options is to not do the water main at all at this time. It is mostly there for redundancy, since there's only one water main feeding the industrial park right now.
Is that the circuit? Completing the circuit?
Yeah.
The drawing?
I think I think that that's what you're talking about. Basically, there's one water main going through that farm field feeding the actual park, and we're looking to add another one that also feeds the park, just so that if you want.
You have to go one way or the other.
Redend.
Yeah. And in terms of hydraulics, it's a little bit more beneficial to have that water main just because the other tank's going to be on the south side of the system, so bringing water more evenly to both of the tanks. But it is not required for that water main to be in place, it's just recommended, so it's also an option to just drop it from the project for now. So those are just a general overview of some of the funding options. We don't have to make any decisions on that tonight, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. Do you guys have any questions about those?
No, I just want to thank Jim and some others that were involved. There's a lot of work in just the last few weeks.
Yes.
To work on figuring this out, and we were trying to go maybe for an earlier date, right?
Yes.
Appreciate everybody's work.
So for this council meeting, the goals are just to get kind of council's approval to pursue the funding plan as depicted in this timeline, which I can go through the major items. And then also approval for Wester to provide a contract amendment to prepare the EDA PER and coordinate EDA to get the grant application submitted. And then to just discuss some of the other needs that are required for this this application process.
Does it require a vote? Or is it consensus? I don't know how we do it. Either way.
Yeah. Because we won't have it, they'll approve the contract, the new contract when it comes in.
Right.
So just to give a brief rundown of this timeline, one of the long lead items is land acquisition. Even though the county is going to give the town the land, they still need to go through the URA process because of the federal funding. So that takes kind of a long time. Estimate is like six months for that. And then at the next council meeting in March, we want to be ready to have a decision from the county on their financial commitment so we could kind of round out that funding package. And then the EDA also recommended that we have the county as a co-applicant on the EDA application, since they still own the land for where the water tower is going to be installed. And then Wester contract amendment, a grant administrator needs to be engaged, and our usual grant administrator, Mike Klein-Peter, doesn't work a lot with EDA grants, so the county has someone that does that, so we would engage their grant administrator. And then also engaging a rate consultant, which is a big reason why we didn't push that accelerated timeline, because we want to have the results from a rate study to see how that would impact rates, to make sure that we do want to go ahead and submit this grant application. Because if if the rates are going to be really high and you don't want to submit the application, then we want to know that before before taking that step. And then some of the other major timelines on this on this schedule are just submitting the EDA application in May, looking to be potentially awarded in September, and then going through design and advertising in April of 2025, construction September of 2025 to March 2027. Does anybody have any questions on this timeline? It's a lot at once.
Yeah, I don't need an answer on this, but does how about the tenants of the park and risks associated to business concerns on the timeframe of this? Have they seen this timeframe?
I don't know that the county has seen this timeframe or.
Mostly the businesses, I hear.
No, they have not seen this timeline, but that's a good question. If they're okay with.
I'm on the committee, so.
So we have a consensus for approval to move forward on that, I think?
Yeah.
Yes. Everyone here? Jim, too? So just consensus. Anything else? Are you sure?
Sure. I have to.
Okay. Thanks, Ian.
There's a lot of work to do here.
Yeah, we've got a lot of things to discuss.
That's why you're building your energy on vacation, Jim.
Recharge your batteries. All right, next up is.
I think he just walked in, so perfect timing.
There he is. How you doing, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for taking a few minutes to talk to me tonight. Sorry I'm late. I got triple booked tonight, so I'm trying to do the best I can here. I've got one more meeting after this one. Talking about the help program and projects that that we have going with that program. This particular one is on Main Street revitalization. And so a couple of things that a couple of things I'd like to ask you all to consider for us. So the county is investing $1 million of the American Rescue Plan in downtown revitalization in the seven communities that are participants in the help process. So Cambridge City being one of those. One of the issues that we want to look at, and I wish I could just hand you the information about the program itself, the application process. We're still working on that, we have a draft, we hope in the next couple of weeks to have that all prepared. But this is part of the process of defining eligibility for businesses to apply for funding here. The thought is that a for-profit business in the one of the geographic areas that's been defined, and you all will define the Main Street area that's going to be eligible. And each of the seven communities will be able to establish that for their own community. The map I have here for you, obviously 40 is Main Street. This actually, as I got to look at it a few minutes ago, cuts off Main Street right about the river. So I think the town limits go up to one, don't they? So if you want to extend that out further than than the map shows, we can we can address that. I think as I drove in, I just noticed maybe one or two for-profit businesses that are in that section of the of town, but I don't know that there's any compelling reason for you to eliminate them from consideration. But that's again, that's up to you. I'd like for you all to define where you want the process to be. Obviously, it can be from the east boundary of Cambridge City to the west boundary of Cambridge City on Main Street. The other thing that we need from you is a person from Cambridge to serve on the scoring committee. Steve Hinbotham at the county, and Beth Fields, who is our community coordinator for the health help program, will be leading that process. We want to have a person from each of the communities to help in scoring that community's applications. So and then we'll have others from from various entities across the across the county, the EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and others that will have members of the scoring team as well. That's not completely defined yet either. So those two things we we need to get from you as we finish this process. Defining on the map on Main Street, how far east, how far west you want the eligibility of geography to go. And then we're looking at just along Main Street. So this map actually defines commercial properties and residential properties. Some of the commercial properties would not be eligible because they're they're not for-profit businesses. So you see, there's a church, there's a school, there's a, you know, other other buildings along there that are not going to be eligible under that for-profit business category. So you all select that, identify a person for your to serve on the scoring committee, and we will in very near future be able to launch this program for for all seven communities. What we're trying to identify is a minimum of one, one participant, one rent recipient per community. Some of them, you know, are so small, let's look at economy, maybe they don't have anybody that that applies. But we want to reserve a spot initially for each of the seven communities that are participating. And then the balance of those would be would be based on score in the application process. Up to $100,000 with a 25% match requirement is what the current thinking is. That could change, but I don't believe it will out of that million dollars. The structure that we're looking at is a forgivable loan, because what we don't want here is for people to come in and try to flip a property. We want people who either have an established business or want to establish a business in one of the downtown areas. And so it would be a the current thinking again, I want to make sure clear that there's not a final draft of the program yet, but we're working on that. So it'd be structured as a forgivable loan, and 20% a year would be forgiven if if a grant recipient were to sell their property before that five-year period, then they have to pay back whatever was left of that debt loan. And if they keep it for the five years, then the entire rent would be forgiven, the loan part of it would be forgiven. So that's the current thinking. You need your input on on those two things. Define the length of the corridor that would be eligible in Cambridge, and then identify somebody. And to make it absolutely fair, then that person would not be eligible to to apply for one of the grants. Questions?
Hi, Jim, this is Jim Klein.
Hi, Jim.
How you doing?
I'm good.
When do you need this?
Till Bob gets done with me. So I didn't hear you.
When do you need this?
Oh, the sooner the better, but you know, whenever whenever you can get it. We need that as part of the the materials to that we're going to share with potential applicants, so we can't really launch until we get all of this. So in the next week, I'm going to be visiting all the town councils and get their their input on this.
Okay. And and the individual for the scoring can be, doesn't anybody from the community?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Again, what what we want to do, because you know, we want it to be fair, we don't want I don't want to be on the scoring committee and apply for a grant.
Correct. Sure, absolutely.
So we want to we want to keep it above board in that way. So whoever you want, whether it's a member of council or it's, you know, a resident of Cambridge City, but it should be somebody from Cambridge City.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this something we have to vote on from the boundaries standpoint?
Well, one of the one of the questions I had, you have the you said it's up to the town to decide how far east and west it goes. Do they also decide north and south, or is it just Main Street?
We're we're looking at Main Street. Now, we kind of went back and forth on whether to call it Main Street or downtown because some of the towns, Main Street is not their downtown. So we intend for it to be in Cambridge, US 40. In Milton, the thought is.
Main Street is not.
One, even though Main Street is is not one, so.
So the property owner has to have property facing Main Street down the block off of?
That's now, if if you feel strongly that that's the wrong approach, and I'll tell you, you know, why we think that, we want to have visual impact because we think we think facades will be a big part of this, and and we want to focus on that part of town that that is going to get the most traffic, people are going to see as folks are driving through Cambridge City, it's going to be a visual improvement. So so that's the thinking. Does that unnecessarily cut out somebody that that has a business two blocks off of Main Street? Maybe. But remember that this is a pretty significant grant program. We're not asking the town of Cambridge to participate in in that grant program. So we're trying to get for your community and for the county in general, the most significant impact on improvement of the downtowns of the participants in this project. Now, Richmond is is looking at a little different scenario, but they're using their own $1 million of ARPA funds to support that. So if if y'all feel strongly, I'd be happy to talk to you about your thoughts on that, but that's the the current.
And as many property owners can apply as and.
Everybody that's eligible can apply. It would be it would be awarded then based on their score. And again, the current thinking is at least one for each of the seven communities. You know, if if the highest scoring property only requests $25,000, then the the money will be extended. Obviously, we can we can have more recipients, but at $100,000 each, we're talking about 10 properties. It it may not work out that way, but that's kind of the rule of thumb, so there would be one for each of the communities, would be 700,000, then there'd be 300,000 more that that would be distributed based on 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 scores on the application process. So for for that initial, the Cambridge City applicants and that one reserved for Cambridge City, the applicants would just be competing against each other, the Cambridge City applicants. But then when we get to the additional, any leftover availability, be competing against the whole pool.
When you refer to the 25% match, is that to the property owner that matches?
That would be the property owner, not not the not Cambridge City. So if somebody wants $100,000, it would have to be $125,000.
Project.
Project, correct.
What would be the timeframe to this?
We're not sure exactly when we'll be able to launch it. We're not sure exactly when we'll be able to launch it, but we hope to make the awards by sometime the end of, end of this summer. And then we've talked in terms of up to 18 months to complete the project. Remember that ARPA dollars have to be committed contractually by the end of 2024 at the latest. And then for construction projects, which we're assuming these will be, it has to be spent by the end of 2026. So we shortened that timeline just a little bit to make sure that, that these things get done. If they don't get done in that timeframe, the money goes back to the federal government. So we, we don't want to lose out on some of this money by making the timelines unnecessarily long and then running into problems, hiring a contractor or getting materials or what have you that would, would make us forfeit some of those dollars.
What body has the final say on how many points this project gets for like the local community? Does this body have any input at all for that?
They're, they're a member of the scoring team. The scoring team will do the, the scoring, make recommendations and then the commissioners, since this is county money, commissioners would, would sign off on that project.
The scoring committee is a recommendation to the commissioners.
Correct.
And each community has a representative on the scoring committee?
Correct.
So the additional, after the seven properties are awarded and there's the additional 300,000 left, would they have to be re-scored because they're going to then be competing outside of their own communities? They're not competing against themselves?
It would be the same scores.
Then it would just be the same thing?
The scoring process would be the same, with the possible exception of Richmond, again, because they're using their own money. Beth and, and Steve are, are running the program for both the city of Richmond and Wayne County. And so we're working to make the, the process as similar as possible. If there are any differences, that those differences will be, will be counted in the city's process, but not in the county's process.
Okay.
So that the, the opportunity for a score will be?
I just wondered if the weighting wouldn't, of those scores wouldn't be different once it was competed outside of your own town?
It will not.
Okay.
So that's, that's my request to you to get back with me as soon as you can. If you have questions as, as we go along with this, don't hesitate to get in touch with me.
Well, since we're here, do we, do we agree that it's the entire corridor of the town or do we want to narrow it or, or do we just, I don't know how we're going to get together to answer this question without being in a legal meeting?
Yeah. We can do it in an executive type meeting, is that legal to do that?
I didn't think we could make a decision like that.
Be in the open like this so we can't?
Impression.
Yeah.
I would suggest that the only reason to narrow the scope is if in some of your own planning, you think, you know, this is the segment of Main Street that we really want to focus attention on. But you know, that's, I think, open to you guys to, to decide how you want to do that. And I know what your Main Street plan looks like or what your, your, your comprehensive plan, whether that has identified any particular area that we want to focus attention on.
Could the final decision wait until the March meeting or not? Do you need it before their March meeting?
It can wait. I wouldn't want it to be any longer than your March meeting because we really need to get information out to folks.
That would give you time to at least solicit names of somebody that's really interested in being on that scoring committee. And it also gives a little chance for, you've only got three voters tonight, even though Jim's on the phone, there's just three of you that can vote tonight for it, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be tabled until then and coming up ahead. We can have a name for you and all that at the same time.
The name you can give me, you know, anytime before, before the selection process would start later this spring.
Oh, so that's not a surge?
The segment, the segment of Main Street that you want to identify is the most significant.
I don't know what other people think, like you said, there's only three of you.
That way there's no limitation.
Yeah.
I'd say from Lincoln to Dale Island, that's how, that's my opinion.
Lincoln Drive?
Lincoln Drive, Dale Island.
I mean, the other, I don't know what the other commercial properties are other than the?
Beyond Lincoln Drive, it would only be maybe the subway.
Subway, probably subway.
And then the, the hospital or Henry County's hospital building there, which is brand new.
That's probably not a for-profit business.
Yeah, I don't know.
And the oldest one is not for profit.
Is there a dentist office or something up there?
Not anymore. Well, there's a, Dwayne Fullson's business. They rent, the question is there a rent or not?
Yeah.
Would share a bit.
Yeah, you're right. Wascums.
Funeral.
Funeral home.
I understand the reasoning why downtown was in the, it's called a downtown revitalization program. And I mean, at some point, it's not downtown when you're, I mean.
And you know, what point is that? I think you all can tell, tell far better than I can.
I don't.
You can throw a rock to downtown.
Yeah. I almost say don't in a minute. If, if we can get people excited about new projects.
I'm buying doing the entire corridor.
That's fine. You think that's a reasonable thing? I mean, it's just a opinion.
I think so.
You're just possibly going to get a few more people apply than you would if you limited it.
The rubric will figure it out too, right?
Scoring will figure it out a little bit.
And that's why you, at least you, it's being more pieces of more people.
You're not going to have somebody one block outside of it going, why didn't I have this, you know?
So from one, Road 1 to Gil Avenue?
City Limits.
Hilltop.
On Main Street from City Limits to City Limits.
Cause there's, it's Mount Auburn on the other side of Hilltop.
Yeah.
That's good. I'm a Hilltop fan, let's go.
So you want to make that official for me?
Yeah. Do we need a motion? Okay, I'll take a motion to, I don't know what I'm saying here.
The area that's allowable for grant applications would include Main Street from City Limits to City Limits.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that the, the limitations for the grant from Main Street would be from the eastern city limit to the western city limits on Main Street of Cambridge City.
You're making that motion or asking?
I'm asking for a motion that says that.
So move.
I'll stack the deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then by March, they'll figure out to you.
We'll have a name for you.
Let us know when we've, we've got.
Somebody volunteers for it.
Somebody volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. That it for guests?
Tomorrow. Yes.
All right. Move on to unfinished business.
He's not here that day.
Ken is here tonight, but I can tell you that some letters, some additional letters have been sent out. The property on North Plum Street there has been spoken with again. And the property on South Plum and Church Street, a letter has been sent out.
So North Plum and South Plum. Okay. Okay.
Anybody have anything else on the, on the Blight properties for tonight that came here?
Has there been any news about the program, the Blight program that they spoke about?
I asked Ken about that today and he said they're still waiting on information from the Wayne County.
EDC.
Yeah, on what they're going to do with that so that they can, I know we're waiting on that for that house that burned next to the liquor store. There are some things that, that we're waiting on, but we don't have anything back from them yet. I was expecting we would have something by now.
Is there any news on the two houses on Front Street?
He did not say anything. I, I do know that we cannot, we cannot combine that property into one. I don't know if he'd already said anything to that because the utilities actually run down that alley, so it's, it can't be combined into one property. That's, that's the only thing that I really know on that at this point.
I, I think we're still waiting on the program on there too, because I think we've already voted to kind of move forward with that, but we're kind of delaying until we hear more about the Blight program. And they did, they did tell us 90 days on that, that the first of the year, so we should be getting close to something.
We did review the Blight, yeah, Jim, we did review it at the last EDC meeting. It may be in the minutes I sent you program. I don't remember exactly how it was going to be communicated out.
Okay. So we should be hearing something. So yeah, that's all I have on that. Okay. Next, charging for tree service to use to burn Pilot Cemetery.
Ken asked me to put that one in the electrical ordinance on this one as well.
Okay. So I, I don't have anything on those things. I mean, we're just kind of waiting on.
That would potentially be me as far as new ordinance.
Right.
And I ended up being gone on vacation two weeks out of the four since our last meeting and sick the third week. So you know, the fourth week I did not work on those two ordinance.
So the tree, the tree would also be, the tree services would be in ordinance as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just put that on March. Okay, no problem.
That way you'll have a full, a lot of people here that.
Plus we'll be getting busy in the spring where, or summer and fall.
Yeah. They'll actually be bringing stuff out here in another couple of months. Okay, RV parking and more during the eclipse.
Yeah, that was Jim. Jim?
Jim's not there.
Jim's trying to get out of that.
Jim, don't want to talk about the RV parking, do you?
Well, I mean, I, basically, you know, we, we had agreed to move forward on that in the past and I just, we did relay some concerns regarding rain and such and that. I think we're just going to have to approach that as it comes. I will say that, you know, hopefully during, just after that time, hopefully there's some work being done on the new entertainment space and there may be equipment there handy anyway, if, if there are any ruts or anything like that, so. And otherwise, we'll pray there's no rain anyway, because if there is, there probably won't be the RVs here.
What about damaged deposits or anything like that on, on something like that? Is that a possibility for?
Well, yeah, I think what I had encouraged is that you had agreed in principle to go along with this, but I think it was lacking some details as far as, what you're doing is waiving the overnight prohibition of being in the park or being in the park. And so with that, I think I pointed out in an email, some of the, you know, what, what hours are you really allowing people? What are you going to charge? Are you going to allow any open burning with that, which I'm assuming not? Are you having porta potties on your own rather than having people bring their own in? I think there were some other questions that I raised on that that I think you just need to tie down so to alleviate or at least minimize any potential problems for that night.
Well, two of the three guys are here and there's, I mean, they, they know there's no way they could fill in divots, speak up guys. I mean, if they seek in. We had a, a call today where a car was stuck up at Hilltop, you know, it's stuck in.
A large RV can make a real mess out there.
That's Ken's biggest concern.
I just feel the liability to the town is too great, the damages. I talked to Ken personally and he can't handle all that. And it would fall upon him and his crew. And I think it's just too dangerous to have something like that done the first part of April because of the liability of the damages to, to the bowl. It's my thing.
I would, I agree with that. I mean, when you think about it more in depth, you start coming up with all the possible issues that can arise from that. I don't know if there's, if there's enough meat on the bone there to make it worth doing.
I heard one suggestion was that in the event of rain, to have a backup plan where you could move them to paved areas that the town might control or have access to that would alleviate that rain problem, the ruts at least, could be an option.
Like in the park, you know, this, the area around, back here by the shelters? That would be, that's a similar area.
There's some area back there. There's not near the volume of area that you have up there.
Plus they're all laid out. We have a good understanding, the Main Street organization has a good understanding of what would be put there and how to manage it. So Jim, I, I think you're hearing thoughts of the, part of the board here and we have questions from Robert to answer.
Excuse me.
I'm trying to figure out how we get this done because it's only two months away.
Yeah, it's on top of us right now, really.
Has the committee that's met gone through some of these possibilities or not?
I don't know if they addressed your points. I wasn't involved, but I do, I know they've talked about a number of points.
So there are answers to those questions. I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head. I do know there are porta potts on order to be around town, some of them were to be designated there. They do have a layout of the area and I know they have an idea of what the cost was, but I'm not sure what that is. I can't, I can't remember. But I know all that information's readily available if we want to move forward, but at this point, I'm here and nobody wants to move forward now. So if that's the case, I'm, I'm not spending any more time on it. So I, I just need to know which way to go because we're, we're out of time to, to make any other decisions.
So that's all, my only question is do we have time to fix these problems and come up with an answer to it before we execute?
Although if Main Street is advertised for it, I hate, shouldn't they have they taken reservations from the?
Have we taken any reservations?
As far as I know, they haven't advertised for it yet.
No, I don't think so. Because when we do advertise, we're going to have a QR code to pay automatically. So there'll be paid spots. The money was to be split with the town and Main Street. But the question is, I think, I think it's a good program for the town to have that available, but with the, with this issue coming up with the cost to do this for repair, that's the overarching concern that I have. I still think it's a good program, but I don't know how to solve that problem unless Main Street or another organization subcontract someone to do the work instead of having the town do it, but then is it worth?
Well, and we could take a damage deposit. I mean, I mean, we could say we want a damage deposit, right? But I mean, how do we know that much what that damage deposit needs to be?
And we're charging, we're charging a fraction of what other places are charging.
Right, yeah.
Could they close streets? Could they close Green Street or Parkway Drive?
Fire department.
I know, but I mean, seriously, if that was the case.
They're going to have tent, tent camping, they're going to let them have fire. They're going to be close together and probably people partying. It's not a real good idea to blow a fire together.
I think they canceled.
There was no open fire incident. I think we got rid of the tent.
Your tent, okay, that was a big concern to me. That was a tent camping.
Right, Jim, no tents, right?
I don't know, we haven't been told. No tents.
Jim?
Jim.
No tents.
Thank you.
And no open burning?
No burning.
I know it's a big kind of an open face, but is there any way we could, if we're going to rent these spots, spots out, could we rent out spots that are unpaved areas instead of around the top of the bowl in there and then we would eliminate that possible problem?
I don't think that'd be a wise decision to do that. I mean, if you either do this or just scrap it, I think, but.
If you're not in the concrete, we can't get to them.
I, I didn't think there was very much, there's not much paved space available, really, not, not anywhere near like what we have.
You'd be the school shutting the park down too, where people went and want to drive through there, you know, and there's a whole host of other issues, I think, of that.
There'll be a lot of people here regardless.
You can't use the school a lot, I mean, there's probably other programs. We have a concert that's going to be there that weekend as well, so I don't know where there's other parking lots.
Church, not, not the hold of all.
They're going to have their own programs, the church, of course.
Is this going to be just a one night?
No.
Three weekends.
I think a three night.
Sunday, hopefully Monday.
And the other problem you're going to have is if you don't do it this way in an organized manner, you're going to have to figure out some way to keep people from going, just going in there and, and squatting on, on that, that area for two or three nights. So that'll have to be figured out too. So you have other issues. If you don't go this route, you're going to have to figure out the other issues. So that's why, you know, if we're changing our minds, we need to know now so we can figure out what we need to do.
Can we reach out and get the cost on outsourcing somebody to repair any ruts, do any groundwork after they leave? Do we have time for that?
But then there's your profit that the town, I mean, or more, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're going to split the funds.
I'm sure. And then damage.
How's the damage probably going to work? Because I don't control the weather, so I may rent that spot and then get here and then it rains. That's not my fault, you know? So I think you're going to have an issue with that too.
I just got the charge done, just the camp, that it covers the damage. I don't know if you did separate. We don't want. I just got the charge done, just to camp, that it covers the damage, I don't know if you do it separate, yeah, we don't have to get money back if we leave.
Hey, Jim, I, I did give Troy a, a heads up that this was going to be a discussion topic tonight, so he's already aware that it was a question.
Well, can, can we get together then, again, the committee that was, I mean?
Oh, I'm sure, it's, it's a Main Street.
Jim and I have been on there, Troy, yeah, and, uh, she, Roberts.
But we don't want to advertise right away, or?
Yeah, I mean, if we push it back till after the March meeting, then we're done, really, that's what, thirty-four days out from?
But if we were, we could leave it to the committee to make a decision if we have council representation, but I don't know exactly how, but, I don't know how that works, so.
You have any ideas on that, Jim?
What?
McClain? Jim?
To me, to me, there's only two options, option one is, we move forward, we figure out the damage deposit, we get Bob, uh, all the information that he was asking for, like, right away, so we can change the ordinance next meeting, and, uh, go forward from there. Or, we change, we change it, and we say, no, we're not gonna do it, we're concerned about the, uh, damage to the park, and then the, the group has to figure out, or committee has to figure out, how to secure the park to keep that from happening anyway. So, to me, that's our two options.
Barricades in certain areas, and so no parking, and I, I think we can cover that if we need to.
Did you hear Richard, Jim, McClain, did you hear, he said they could put barricades up and put no parking.
I agree, and we could, you know, tell, tell him that, you know, I agree, that can be done.
And what Jeff said about, what Jeff said about returning money to people if we do a damage deposit, have, have we talked about possibly, like, he said, just charging enough to cover it?
I, I don't think that.
I think, if you look at what other people are charging, we're not even in the ballpark of some of those places.
What, what is this cost, we haven't even talked about the cost.
We did at a meeting, just two months ago, and I can't remember what it was, it was low.
We did, did you, Jim, do you remember what it was?
I don't know, two hundred, I don't, I don't remember, it's two.
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty, or two, it wasn't much.
It's two hundred.
We've heard four, eight, it's for three nights.
Yes.
Per night, is all we're talking about.
Oh, that's per night, my bad, so it was six nights.
That was the whole thing.
Oh, okay. I don't know, we're, I don't know if we're gonna be able to produce a motion in a second, too, because.
There's, there's a.
There may be one of us forward, one of us not, and then we wouldn't even get a second on it.
Right, you know, kind of for half of it, or maybe not the other half of it.
Just a concern, that's all, either we table it, like, and have the, have the committee work, but I don't think Jim's suggesting table it, he's saying we vote to go ahead with it, let the committee do its job, and then, uh.
I'm fine with that, I think we already made, we made that decision a while back, what we'd have to do is make a decision to stop that, I think, at this point, you know, from going forward, because we already made the decision that we were gonna go forward.
Right, but, but with the encouragement to this, to the committee to come back with these specifics, if we can get final at the March meeting.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
We, we can have that.
Okay. But we then go forward, do we then tell Main Street to go forward with their piece of it?
That's the, that's the rub, I don't, here you're gonna come up with a final plan on March, and what if it's voted down, then you're not doing it.
Yeah, and, and you've put another month's worth of work into it.
Yeah, but that maybe sometimes is a gamble, you say.
Can't people set up their RVs somewhere else, that's a concern, which.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, obviously, we'll have to address the concerns that are brought forth here on repairs, which means either charging more and a deposit or both.
And you've answered a couple of, from what I, no tents, no burning, no self porta potties, you're gonna provide those, so the real question, and it sounds like three days instead of one or two nights, so then it's just a matter of how much you want to charge, and where are you gonna put them?
Well, it's, it's.
And they've already got a map, map down on the, of the spots.
What's, how many spots are available?
How many spots you got available, Jim?
I don't remember, do you remember, like, it's like thirty, I think, or something like that?
Yeah, it's not a huge number, but, yeah, somewhere in there.
I'm assuming you're not waiving any, your no alcohol premises is still in place.
They're, they're being informed that there's no alcohol allowed in the park, and that's part of the application.
I think we just need to come up with a dollar figure, then, that's gonna make it comfortable, that assuages some of your concerns about the cost of the damage.
What about insisting ordinance, though, is that gonna have to be altered, then, or changed?
Well, it is, it's a waiver, which we've, which we've done sometimes, like, on fireworks, you will waive, even though it says no fireworks, then you waive it for a specific time, and so it sounds like you're talking about passing a resolution that would waive the enforcement of your code for that seventy-two hour period, with these conditions.
Yeah, starting at this day and time, and ending in this day and time, whatever it is, that we set up.
I've just talked to a lot of people in town, they're not for it, so I'm just trying to represent the best I can, so.
And that's great, that's what I'm saying, let's, so I'd make a motion for the committee to proceed with the program, providing answers, providing, uh.
Dollar amount.
Dollar amounts, and to report back that material, that information to this group on March fifth, to discontinue the project, but my motion would be to go forward with it.
And find the answers to some of those questions, and then we can make that decision on March fifth.
I'd just like to see, they're leaving someplace, instead of RVs parked along the street, and people basically camping on the side of the street, something in different places, they're all found, so that's.
They'll be here, they'll, they'll be in this area, they're gonna be here somewhere, but, you know.
We need to kind of get them someplace where we have more control of what's going on, than just everywhere. You know, nobody wants to pull RV in front of their houses, and, you know, so, campsite.
People will park wherever they can.
They will.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know, that motion probably wasn't intelligent, or intelligible, but, uh.
Yeah, and I think the committee needs to address the concerns regarding the, uh, the damage, and do so with, you know, somehow by probably charging more and a deposit.
Okay, what, what if they get stuck in there, you gotta call records, or call the campers out, ready for that.
That's right, good question.
As a camper, I wouldn't.
But as a camper, you're making the decision to go into a campsite that could be problematic.
They'll also pay the fee to do that, too.
But it could be on their agreement, says we waive all risks to.
Yeah, that, that could be in the agreement, in the site agreement.
It's a good point, I just, that's the only way I could.
It's just gotta be covered, it's another one of those things you just gotta cover.
So, uh, it just would amend my motion to what Jim said, that they'll come up with the appropriate dollar number to cover costs.
So, is this an official motion being made?
Yeah, I think so, man, it's a point of clarification from what you've already done.
Exactly.
And it's, it's, it's just pointing out that we need specifics that will be set for consideration at the March meeting, at that point, this will either be a go project, or it won't be a go project, after you answer these specifics.
So, I'm, I'm looking for a motion, then, to answer the specific questions that have been brought up regarding RV spaces in the park, and, uh.
Yes, you're not approving it, right now, you're just delegating, once again, in more detail, what you're looking for from this committee.
Yeah, I'm entertaining a motion to move forward with the process, with the final decision that may be made at the March meeting.
All right, so I sort of said that, and I made that motion, now, we'll see if it, we'll see if it goes anywhere, so we have a motion.
We second, or, I, I don't know, if I can, can I?
Yep, you can second.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed?
Yeah.
And since this is not a financial type of thing, normally it takes three out of the elected members, but for a procedural thing like that, two out of the three here, I'm fine with going ahead, just with this delegation to the committee, because it's not final action.
But I think broadly, this is a learning exercise for the council, it's a learning exercise for all of what we're trying to do for the future, any program in the park, we're on new ground here, from what I'm understanding, so, appreciate the work and effort and thinking, thank you, Gary, I mean.
Hey, um, can I ask Gary a question, Gary?
Yes.
You said you've heard, you've heard concerns from citizens, I was wondering what those concerns are.
About the damage, and they don't like the idea of people, you know, being overnight in the park, and they're worried about security, and a lot of the residents that's long there are worried about the, the noise and the commotion, and just general things of that nature, but mainly, it's the damage and the liability to the town.
Richard's nodding, he's got the same.
And, and, and I, I think that the police department are gonna be overwhelmed at that time, and I think this will just add to their workload.
The good news is the Main Street organization, it will be policing it, but I realize not policing it like you would be, just tracking the users and the.
We're probably gonna be forced out at one, too, so, that's not gonna help us any, but.
Right, okay.
Okay, thanks, Gary, I'm just, I just, I'd like to hear what, what the concern was.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, moving on?
Yes.
Everybody agree, okay, East German Town Fire Contract.
Okay, so, I got a call the next day after Pershing got their contract, and it was from their board president, he said, you guys were supposed to let us know when you raise our amount, and I remembered Bob saying, we didn't raise.
We didn't raise.
We didn't raise the amount, so when I looked back, they still owe us a thousand from last year, they signed the contract for twenty-three, where they would pay three thousand, but now they wanna go back to two thousand dollars.
So, not only are they attracting about this year, they don't like last year's that they signed, they don't really have a legal leg to stand on.
So, I, they owe us a thousand for last year because they signed it, and then, they don't want the twenty-four of three thousand.
Well, yeah, but their, their premise is false, they're saying they don't want us to raise it this year, we did, right, we raised it last year, and they agreed to it.
They agreed to it, right?
Yes. I told him, I was like, bring it up.
And if I, if I remember correctly, in the previous years before that, it wasn't raised.
It wasn't, that's right, it was not, because they, we tried to raise it, they didn't get it in their budget in time, and we, y'all decided to keep it at two thousand. So, we did not raise it then.
And it was at two thousand for quite a while, wasn't it?
Because we have a map that Nathan filled out, that, yeah, we were at two thousand for a while. All right.
So.
So, I'm going to tell them.
We, we don't need to vote anything, do we?
I just kinda like bringing that.
I would just direct Sherry to advise them, if they do not sell that, there will not be fire protection services for that committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not willing to change anything personally, so, I'll go on, I'll go on record.
All right, we don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jim.
All right, new business, there is none, it says.
None that I had.
All right, no new business, some reports from committees, boards, and commissions.
He goes first.
Police? Good. Good?
We had a truck breakdown, had a circulator for the pump go bad, we got it replaced, truck will be pulled back in service tonight.
Just one.
We had to hold our park, it's supposed to be ten weeks away, but Payne's managed to find one, another source is actually cheaper, he got a truck that I could go for, so, that part's good, everything else, while ago, it was working, so, uh, fireworks were planned on the sixth of, uh, July, and then the car show the next day on the seventh. That was.
Will there be a rain out day?
Huh?
Will there be a rain out day?
There would be.
No?
We never. Was, if it happens, we'll always do it next night, don't we, we don't wanna keep them, we get about, you know, it's just a.
First possible.
First possible day, we do them.
Okay.
The Christmas lights are just about all down, hopefully the guys got the rest of them tonight, they will try to, we're close to having all of them down, after the lights are turned off, we never had any more damage, so.
Good.
We lost quite a bit of money off of it this year, but they never, we never had more, we need to still arrest, get, get camera system in that park, for that, and just for other things, I mean, just in general, it needs to be for, because there's a lot of people in that park in the evenings and stuff, and it's just not really safe. You don't know what could go on down there.
I just can't believe people could even steal your lights.
Yeah, they steal light, break it, drive it along the river, they pulled that, one of those golf things out of the ground, that was a job, I mean, it was sinking in the ground, that, they wouldn't work that hard for money.
That's harder, yeah, that's harder than working.
Well, that's part of unfinished business, so, the, the park, park committee is working on, did we talk about that last meeting, about cameras?
Yeah, we talked about it.
We actually, uh, brought it, we actually had someone come in, last week, and had a brief conversation about it, so I think, the original quote that we got, we can do it considerably cheaper, so, that's something.
Yeah, it was a big name business.
Yeah, so, we're still exploring that, um, maybe, maybe by March, we might have to be more definitive answer, so, as soon as it gets warm, it'd be good to, yes.
Okay.
Public Works, I know he's not here, but I had one thing from that.
Well, he said the bids were open for the committee crossing grant, and Dave O'Mara won the, the, um, bid at one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents, he needs signatures, but this has Jim's name on it, so Jim, I, unless, Mike can sign it, but it has Jim's name, so probably, I'm gonna include this in your packet also, okay, Jim? There's things that Ken, that Ken needs for you to sign, and I'll, I'll, I'll put notes on all those for you.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so that was, that was that.
Yeah, can you also describe if there's a valve that needs to be replaced in the water tower?
That I don't.
That's letting water out through the overflow pipe on the water tower?
Yes, you got an alarm on that, didn't you?
Yeah.
No, um, what's his name called?
The neighbor up there, the tower pole, yeah, and recorded it.
Yeah, so the overflow pipe is letting water, that's just a valve that's going bad in there, is what they said, and they're gonna have to replace that, and it's gonna be sitting around five thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, we'll have to shut the tower down and drain it, all that good.
But we will maintain pressure, the city will maintain water pressure.
Let me know when it's gonna happen, so I can arrange to have tankers on standby when needed.
Okay.
Okay.
And, uh, I guess that leaves us.
I have, hey, since Jim, well, I guess this Tommy pictures, I have these, and Jim, I haven't seen.
Put this packet for them, sorry.
Putting my packet, okay, and one more, the Bills more, um, survey, five thousand eight hundred dollars needs to be paid, um, where you guys want me to pay that from, this is up on the fire station, as Jim King pointed out, it says Hakers Town Canal, but it's Whitewater Canal, but it's for the, um, survey, Bob?
No, it's actually, the old survey showed the Hakers Town Canal.
It did, oh, okay, all right.
Is that the extension from, it was Whitewater through downtown, and Hakers Town North?
Uh-huh, yep.
Am I correct, stand corrected?
Yeah, me too, so, um, I just need to.
Hakers Town was trying to take over, in the city.
They were, weren't they, I just need a motion to pay this, and where you want me to pay it from? Because if, there's no.
So, my recommendation to Sherry was that since this is really part of the project for the, uh, performance area, and some of our ARPA money was gonna be used for that project, that we take this money from the ARPA funds, and then retract this as part of the project, the total project cost.
I think that's correct, that's exactly right.
Fair, okay, okay, great, so, if I can get a motion, then that'd be, I'll do that, okay, Jim, King, you second, you ready?
Second.
Okay.
Second, I'll second, all in favor, we do, aye.
Aye.
Okay, oh, thanks. And, um, I have, Suzie called me today and told me that Mike, um, your term is up on the sewer board, as is Jim Cohen's, I tried to call Jim to see if he still wanted to be on, and I have not heard anything back from him, and, um, we need to reappoint you guys, if you want to stay on the sewer board.
Maybe I'd rather do one other one day.
All right, all right, so, I'll need to get some motions, is that right, Bob?
Who else was from the town council was on there, wasn't Jeff on there?
Um, Steve Brown, Jim Cohen, Mike Amick, and Amy Bex, no.
No, not Jeff, no. I know that, uh, Nathan was on a while back, but he's, yeah, he's not on there anymore either, so. Okay, is that it, Sherry?
Um, do I need a motion, reappoint him, or just ask if it's?
Well, I thought, is that an appointment by your chief executive, which would be Jim, as the president?
Point, point is by the town council president, no more, that's the stormwater, and then the Western Way Regional Sewer District, I don't have any notes by that.
I'm fine with being on there if you want to make the appointment, yeah.
Yeah, um, go ahead and vote for it.
Okay. I need a motion to put my.
Need a motion to put me back on the sewer board.
You will be your seat three.
For seat three on the sewer, Western Way.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll make the motion, but.
All right, all in, we got you covered.
We're getting slap happy.
All in favor of putting me back on the sewer board and say, aye.
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 And then I'll wait on, on Jim Cohen.
You're wearing your proper color for tonight, I know.
Right, that's, that's all I have now.
Okay, uh, Bob, you have anything?
Yeah, the only thing I had was like on the survey, we did get the new legal descriptions and the survey all complete, so that was part of the, um, grant application you got in.
At the tire department here?
So, I have, okay.
Was that? Was that, you do have still? It's all legal now, you're now in the town limits.
I'm on the outside, I have to be out there.
Both buildings are in the town?
I have to do a resident of the boroughs.
Limits, and then, um, we, I, we got everything finally properly filed for the stormwater rates for this year's taxes.
We've already started getting calls, yeah, they've called over and asked what about their taxes, and they said, call Cambridge City.
Well, because people haven't gotten their tax papers yet.
No, but they're looking online.
Oh, they're looking online, so they will.
Said, call Cambridge City.
So, those are two major things from this, let's, yeah, but that's all I have.
All right, if that's it, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move it.
Done.
All right, here we go.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you all for coming.
I hope it was, I mean, tonight.